We can start, I think, the public comment portion as Brian had suggested.
I have a question.
Although as Kerry says, I think perhaps I could state the obvious that this is just not a forum to carry on some sort of negotiation as far as this goes. It's absolutely no sense to do that.
Fred also wanted to speak.
Fred, did you want to?
No, I just wanted before I just said I had a whatever the future format here tonight. I had several points I wanted to bring up also, so I wouldn't want us to go from
Okay.
From here to there and not come back here. That's all.
But if you wanted to address some of the matters that...
Yeah. So, to ground this conversation in first principles, just to take us back to what began in 2015. And Susan, to your point about being competitive, right? It's important to ground ourselves, I think, in that goal because when we very, the very first time I had conversations with Susan, it was to explore whether or not the town had a collective appetite to redevelop this property. And so, the six historically designated structures after the other approval was achieved wasn't assigned, and I know it's a state level and a federal level process, but it was done with a fair bit of local support. And that was not, to me, seeming like a pro-development stance. And so, the very first thing that we talked about was would the town be willing to do what was within its capability to do? And that was why we came in originally with the taxes, the abatement. And it's really, other towns called this a deferral of assessment increase. And that helps kind of clarify what's actually going on, and I think Kerry was clarifying it also, where this is something that the improvement, and it gets very difficult to model every dimension of this, but I'm going to throw out a couple of things. If a building takes 18 months and happens to come up along the way, this is during the construction period, which there are probably 100-plus jobs in terms of people at a construction site during the full-on construction of the type of construction we're talking about, okay? And we probably have a three-year sustained period if everything went perfectly, where we were just building, okay? So you have over 100 jobs every day working over at this place. Now, again, it gets fragmented through the phasing. However, to that 18-month example, there could be assessment of a partially completed building that would kick in for one year. So you could have a building that was maybe a $10 million building, and it was built to a $6 million level of completion. It's not modeled in here because if I modeled every single scenario, this would get really confusing, more so than it is. But, we pay one year at a $6 million valuation on that partially constructed building. When it became finished at the $10 million completion point, as evidenced by the certificate of occupancy at the, again, the $10 million level, then the, it would go back to no improvement assessment, right? So it's, the building itself gets a little bump if it takes a long time to build, and then it has seven years of no taxes on the new building. So the land itself is never touched with these programs. And we showed that in our slides where we estimate the land to go from $94,000 a year to 140, just after some of this entitlement work.
Tax.
The tax on the land, yes, just purely that line item. So unfortunately, there are a lot of moving pieces here. And so, the thing that perplexes me is having come up and worked with so many people who are here tonight. I mean, I've got no hell, well, I actually shouldn't call it names because I'd be going through half the room. And then through that VCI process, we got feedback about what the deliverables were for the town, again, thinking that we had, has applied for in that 2015 scenario, the economics established in the approval of the application. There are many dimensions, because all the questions that have been brought up tonight are valid things to talk about because this is a long process that involves many different boards and reviews from the town level to the state level to the federal, right? I mean, there's a little bit of everything before something is living and breathing over on that site. So you can't say, to Ben's point, we need to know everything on a mixed-use development. So to answer some of your questions, Susan, you had talked about uses that were called out in different parts of the plan. I would bracket it more broadly, and I have in my letters, and you'll see that in your packets, the commercial into a retail component and to an office component, okay? The retail component is generally speaking, the first level of this entire project, the on-the-ground level that is not over by the apartments, right? Or the historic Brainerd House restoration. So you have, many things have fallen to the umbrella of retail. You can have a market, grocery store type of thing, you can have restaurants. All those things fall into the context of this plan. It's impossible to do a job that has any phasing and to know everything upfront and to come in and say, this is exactly what we've built over many years, and it will take these larger numbers. Now, I get, the prior tax deals were, you know, Ben, you referenced taxes that went from 4,000 to maybe six to 10, right? On an annual basis. And I would argue that there are some fundamental differences when you're talking about the scale of production that's comparing a $10,000 endpoint to a million dollars every year. There are dimensions to this that are more complex, there's just no two ways about it. And so, when we're going back to that competitiveness, right? There's a very clear and easy path. These incentive agreements can be as simple or as complicated as you make them. The simpler they are, the more easily we can get in deeper and have made an investment that we can't walk away from without a lot of pain. We're not there yet, but we could be really soon if we could get back to where we thought we were when we kind of worked through with this whole community, the plan on the historic restoration side, and also, you had mentioned a part about the question on the office on the second floor. That's evidence of another iteration of this entire discussion because we had said we could do the Brainerd House, and then we put the Sage House into play. And this is all over many months, right? Of back and forth and trying to both test the market, get the feedback, and also put it into a site plan that was deliverable. The last piece of that was the Hart Jarvis relocation. And we said, we will try to, because it was one of the suggestions from the advisory group, we will speculate on something you're asking about, the market study for office. I'm not feeling that there's a ton of demand for the office. So that's that difference between the 75,000 and the 92. It's where we're saying, we'll take the shot of delivering more office on top of the retail on that A building, that large 36,500-square-foot building, as a way of potentially covering some of the costs of moving the Hart Jarvis house. We'll take that shot. We wouldn't put it into an agreement because there are unknowns. If we had an approved site plan today from the zoning commission, it would not get built exactly as that site plan indicates, okay? On its entirety. Because the commercial leasing process with each tenant engagement, and we have this with the one process we've been administering that was there when we got here, they have specific things that they want, okay? Each tenant needs a modification to get their configuration into our town's development. And so, from that perspective, it's why you go back to the front side of this process where you say, what are the core parameters that we care about? If you have someone who has worked with the town to create something that really, I'm amazed by the amount of support we've achieved at the end of all this process, and that's one of the things that makes me hopeful that we'll have a successful conversation tonight, but the, the process of it is just something that you have to say, the parameters that we want to meet are. And you referenced some of the things that are answered in our application. We project three and a half years, but we are asking for five to make an investment of $30 million. Those are core parameters for something like this. Some towns would say, $30 million, that's great, let's sit down and we're going to vet, we're going to vet you as a developer, we're going to check out what other things you've built, and we're going to establish a comfort level, and we're off to the races, and we have our lawyers talking to each other and putting together something. Others may say, and in this case, we have a little less experience with the larger-scale stuff, so now we're having a conversation about parameters to add beyond that. So we put in a site plan application, a site plan proposal that we think has integrated all this discussion and will be continually refined. But we can say, it needs to have 75,000 square feet of commercial product. If we don't build 75,000 square feet of commercial product, I spent $30 million and do these residential components in five years, and to Ellen's point, I think he made it, posed it pretty bluntly, and then I thought maybe I need to ask for six years. That was the first thing I was sitting here thinking about as I was in my chair. But the point is, if we don't do what we agreed to on the investor side, the performance side of making this come alive through a very public process that we'll all be working on together if we can get out of the gates here, then there's nothing, there's nothing to talk about. And in fact, Brian, to your point, we could have put $20 million out and never, and then not done our side enough to get any benefit. But if we get the 30 out in the five years, because that's all, you know, if we all agree on that, then yeah, we should be able to use those funds, and I've explained in letters and things like that, that basically explain some of the approaches that we've taken. And frankly, I think it's hard to go at the, to divorce yourself from the goals of a community as stated in this VCI report because the state funds that were used to create the VCI report were grounded in historic base, we'll say. And the folks who came in and did all the work basically said, well, it's got to be Brainerd, Sage, and Hart Jarvis. And we had a hard time coming up with a way to do that. So we were working in tandem the whole time, and some people complained about the residential density, and we came up with, I think, a very compelling approach on the residential side just to make it work. We talked about the unit mix, 71% studios and one bedrooms. These are friendly things to towns, they're millennials, senior housing, they're all kinds of things. I don't want to go on too long, but I do want to ground this back to one point, and then I can answer any other specific questions that come up, of course. We can do this job in the way that we're proposing if we work together, and if we can't work together, we can't do the job. And we can't get even a commercial tenant to the table because we've tried. And until they see us moving forward, something where we're willing to step off on the 102 units and we can probably get a commercial lease or two, and then the rest of the commercial lease, the commercial space, excuse me, that would be qualifying to even get to build the residential, would be built on spec. We're ready to do that. And then, when we show the world that this is real, we expect to have a different conversation with prospective tenants. But we have to actually act our way to progress. We can't talk and design and think about it with so much process ahead of us that is very expensive. We can't make the, we can't make the investment to do that if we have what we thought were prior agreements rescinded on us. We just have to get back to where we thought we were, or say, I guess, I guess we didn't have the appetite, you know, collectively to get this done. But we are trying.
Well, you mentioned the rest of the needs in the project, and we had shared this with you, the planning department and my office. There are many, many things associated with this kind of a development, and these are copies of the chart that I'll pass out to the selectmen, just to illustrate the point of how much more is needed in terms of this project. And this is simply the timeline that was estimated that on June 27th of the need for the text amendment, which has occurred. There was all of the amendments and the drafts and the hearings and the text amendments were completed. Then the special permit process has to occur, which is preparing engineered site plan, submission of the PCC development application, staff consultant review, public hearings, post-approval, special permit, and then the actual permitting, and then the actual building.
And so, who writes the checks to administer that process?
I'm sorry?
Who writes the checks to administer all of these processes? The developer. The developer invests in this.
Yes.
And the developer needs to have the belief that we're working together to make something happen.
I mean, I think it's fair to say, and I, since 2003 that I've been here, we have not had a $30 million site plan or $30 million investment in the town. So to say that we're not used to this, I think it's fair to say.
Sure. And it's why, and I said last night's meeting, I've done the stuff that we did in the last year and a half plus in six weeks on other projects, which is a zoning regulation change and an approval on the tax abatement.
But once you get to...
No, 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 and then we're off to the races. My point is, I've done all the adjusting I can to Portland time. And so, now we have to kind of say, let us run with it, or we got to run somewhere else, and we got to do a project. Because frankly, we have exposure, Ellen summarized it, and the whole group did. There's, there's a big bad world out there. The rest of the country is doing better than Connecticut. That'll inform Fed policy, rates will go up, our window closes on some of the building blocks that we have modeled into even stepping up and doing this.
We ran into that a bit in the previous iteration in 2009. But I also want to point out that, you know, this is important to the town of Portland, and that we do it right, and that things are tied up very tightly, and I'm looking at the lawyers for that because that's something that I surely don't want in five years to have somebody say, you know, you were for selectmen, and you didn't make sure that these ribbons were tied properly, because that's not the way we operate. It may take us a while, but we get it right.
I can assure you, if we're detailing ribbons in this agreement, then we've gotten too into the weeds.
Maybe I should use a, you know...
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. And so, I agree with you. I think that the, what, sorry. But yeah, I think that that's exactly, oh, I definitely know what you mean. And I agree with you. I think that there are the parameters that can easily be plucked out of the application that are the gotta-haves.
But as I've said to Fred Hassan, the owner, one of the owners of the property, you know, this is a lot, and sometimes, you know, at midnight, when we're getting out of here, we're still thinking about it. And I want to ensure that you recognize how important this is to us. And sometimes stating the obvious is very important, and the audience that we have feels very similarly, I would conjecture, because they're here, and it's 9:30 at night, and they could be doing something else better. Mary Dickerson, Economic Development, Mary wanted to say one thing.
I would like to speak if that would be possible.
Sure. Brian has a, wants to ask a statement?
Do I understand you to say that your company cannot make progress on this project without a full seven-year tax abatement?
Yes. Because there is no project, there's no investment made in it without the economic terms that we believed we had the first time around.
It seems like a very slim sort of margin.
No, 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 no. Let me elaborate if, I've said it, but I'll try to rephrase it a little bit. We came to Portland thinking, after February 2015, that we were just going to work on the parameters that I'm alluding to right now in terms of what qualifying actions need to be taken for the seven-year abatement that was applied for and in our view approved. You got a year and a half of our effort on that assumption that we knew, of course, wasn't a legal document, we hadn't gotten to that, and I thought other considerations were slowing this down. And that was fine because we were finding our way to the modification. But if we look at the 2015, the only thing I knew that wasn't going to get built in 2015 when I came in was that plan, right? It was, there's specific language in our original application that talks about it being modified, but we brought up at that time a $20 million number. As we worked it, it became a $30 million number that we feel we can safely get invested into this property. And I, it may be too late at this point, but if we haven't been checked out, and you haven't looked at some of the stuff we've built recently, I don't know what to say because there has to be a trust between us, among us, I should say, in order to get anything done.
I've done my best to check you out, I don't know.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. And we appreciate showing you, showing you the Barnet Place project.
You know what I'm saying. It's not 9:30. I turn to my attorney and always ask her to help me. Do the proper research, and Mary Dickerson too. Mary, did you want to speak?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to.
I hope I didn't misspeak, Dan, I apologize for some...
I am speaking as staff to the commission, and that's a position I have held for nearly nine years.
To the Economic Development.
To the Economic Development Commission. In those nine years, I have worked on 37 different financing projects. So I would ask for a show of hands, who here has worked on a project in the range of $500,000? Who has worked on a project in the range of $1 million? 10 million? 25 million? 50 million? 100 million? I was the author of the accounting policy for Solomon Incorporated's move into Seven World Trade Center. I would ask you to go see our work, but as most of you saw on TV, it's gone. In 1992 and '93, we built out the upper floors of that building. I handled most of the accounting and reporting for that, as well as putting together the financing. I can tell you that putting together the financing for, I'll give you an example, 270 Main Street Country Market Building, was a matter of calling a bank and talking to the bank and bringing him out and showing him what we were doing. And a $300,000 or $400,000 loan on a handshake, the next day the paperwork was ready, things were signed, and we moved forward. On a project on a scale of $25 to $50 million, we're looking at not only debt investors but equity investors as well. So this process that Dan is trying to talk about, and I've really gotten to know you and I like you, but you can go on forever. And I can say that because I've known him long enough, and Susan will agree. The process here is entirely different. When I look at, I'll give you an example of what a dork I am. So today Janet Yellen spoke, and we talked about Fed policy, and they decided not to move the rate. At the same time they decided not to move the rate, I pulled up tonight the Treasury yields. So the two-year Treasury yield went up by 1.3 basis points, the 10-year note went down by 1.9 basis points, and the 30-year Treasury bond went down by 2.9 basis points. That's a flattening of the yields curve, and what that says is interest rates are going up. So you could expect a quarter-point interest rate rise in December, and you can expect probably two-quarter-point interest rate rises in 2017. So let's do some calculations on Dan's basis. If you have a $100,000 mortgage on your house for 30 years at 5%, your payment is going to be $536.82 a month. On an annual basis, that's $184 more. On your 30-year mortgage, that's $5,500 more. Not a lot of money. You take a project like this at $30 million, you take a quarter-point rise in the interest rate, your payment goes from $161,046 a month to $165,660. That's a rise of $4,600 a month. Over a year, that's $55,000. Over a 30-year term, we're talking $1.661 million. This is the kind of financing that he has to put together. Last year at this time, the Fed funds rate was a quarter of a percent less than it is right now. So in this year's time that we have gone through these iterations, the cost of financing for this project went up by $1.6 million. So what he's asking for is a fixed tax assessment so that when you go to these debt and equity investors and you try to put together a $30 million project, you can give them fixed costs that they can look at. It takes one more unknown out of the process. It's that simple. When you do a project of $250,000, you take a construction loan, you probably pay interest only. There's a balloon payment at the end, that balloon payment is settled by you getting a mortgage. That mortgage is a lien on the property that you have just constructed. It's that easy. It's not that easy on a $30 million project. And I am probably the only one other than Dan in this room that has worked on one. And I have worked on more than one. I've written the policy for them, and I've written the accounting policy for them. You cannot compare the tax abatement on a $580,000 building to a tax abatement on a $30 million deal. And for anybody to try to do that is like trying to talk about financing a $1,500 used car versus financing the construction of a million-dollar home. They are apples and oranges. The financing market is different, the debt and equity markets are incredibly different. And for me to sit here and listen to this board talk about giving handouts, these aren't handouts. What this is, is this is a tool to forecast the expenses that this person is going to have investing in our community. And when you sit and you look at the fees that are required, there's a 3% fee required for an application to the town. So a simple application of $30 million generates $360,000, $360,003 in fees. Those fees are what pays for the consultants and the overtime that's required to review those applications. There is no money upfront, there is no check being written to the developer, there is no underwriting. What this board gives him by giving him a fixed tax assessment is a tool to go out to these investors and to say to them, this is what the town is doing for us, these are what we project our costs to be, and they know that that cost to the town is fixed. Those banks and those investors have absolutely no way to forecast the value of the building or the value of the mill rate here. We could have some type of catastrophic event that could require the town to intervene without any kind of federal aid, that could raise our mill rate substantially, which would raise their taxes substantially. Their banks that are taking a chance on them and taking a chance on this community want to know that. So it's apples and oranges to talk about a fixed tax assessment on a $300,000 property for three years at 50% versus talking about fixing a tax assessment on a property whose construction period is longer than that tax abatement. This is a tool. This is not a handout. This is a tool that is used in financing major projects like this all over the country. We have not had one here, and I will tell you, I have worked with three different developers... And I will tell you, I have worked with three different developers, and I have talked with two others that were interested in the project. Each of them walked away. The reasons they walked away were as varied as, we have poor access roads into our community, so it's going to be hard to draw people in. Two, your community is not business-friendly, and all the bridges have been burned. This is what we're dealing with. This is the reality. And I had someone say to me after one of the meetings, when Dan said, you know, the next thing that's going to come is an eight-thirty G, that's a threat. It's not a threat. It's actually a reality, and it's something that, when I sit around with the Middlesex County and the statewide economic development people that we talk about every day, property that cannot be developed becomes targeted for eight-thirty G low-income developments. And the reason is because they are court-mandated. And it eliminates a lot of the hurdles and the problems that we, as small communities, put in front of developers when we do things like fail to understand their financing packages. That's what this is about. This is a piece of a financing package, and it is a tool for them to use for development.
Any questions for Mary?
Yeah, Mary.
Ben?
Do you know the breakdown between the commercial taxes anticipated and the residential taxes?
We have estimations.
And do they match up with what the assessor put in a previous letter?
The assessor could not, and I have met with Gail.
No, she put it in a previous letter. I believe she put a value per apartment of, what was it, one hundred and fifty-six thousand?
We met and we discussed in broad-based terms, because you cannot put a value on the apartment based on, there's a lot of considerations that go along with that apartment. So we have a basic site plan that looks at the apartment buildings. There are fixtures that come into those buildings that either belong to the developer or belong to the tenant. If they belong to the developer, they're taxable. If they belong to the tenant, they're not. So there's a lot of variables. So what we discussed was coming up with a potential value for the tax abatement. And that value we came up with was five to seven million dollars. That was a number that we talked about at our Economic Development Commission meeting last night.
Five to seven million?
So over that period of time, that's five to seven million dollars.
On the residential?
On the project as a whole. Now realize, Ben, those apartments, although those apartments are residential, for purposes of classification, they are commercial buildings, because that is a commercial enterprise. So you can call them residential all you want to. Fact of the matter is, they are, as a matter of record, commercial buildings.
Right. I call them residential because they can put a burden in a shop.
But they are, they are not residential. They are commercial buildings that are in the business of providing housing.
And there's additional liabilities that go along with residential use.
They're no different than dormitories or anything else.
Let's just call it residential use.
There's the same thing that then, then you would consider a hotel a residential use, you would consider dormitories on college campuses a residential use.
Absolutely not, and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
A hotel and a dormitory is not going to put children in the school system. When you have a unit, a residential unit, it can be in any zone, or we can, we allow them in almost every zone, including our industrial zone, you can put a child in the school system. So for the purpose of this meeting and the purpose of trying to figure out what the burden would be to the town of Portland and what the potential burden to the residents, I think we can just call it a residential use in a business zone. Does that satisfy, so just so we're on the same?
No, it's still a commercial building, but...
Correct, correct, but it's a residential use.
Can you, can you move on?
Please, okay. Residential use, okay. But back to my point, what is the overall value going to be of the residential side of this property versus the commercial side?
There is no way to give you a breakdown now, and I will tell you why. If the office space that Dan has available was to be rented by, we'll say, Middlesex Hospital, and they were to put a diagnostic center in there, then that diagnostic center would have equipment that would bring in personal property taxes. Those personal property taxes would far exceed anything that would come from a commercial use, we'll say, a grocery store. So you're looking at seven to ten million dollars in equipment. So personal property on seven to ten million dollars in a, we'll say, fifteen thousand square foot space.
No, I was referring to just the structures, just based on...
But it doesn't matter, because their fixtures are built for that. So you've got Stanley magic doors, you've got everything else that's part of that structure. So until you have that tenant use, there's no way for you to tell, you can come up with a baseline of what you think it's going to be.
Correct, that's what I'm looking for, correct.
The baseline we came up with is a million dollars a year as a baseline for tax revenue.
No, no, I'm looking for the value of the structures. For example, there is one, two, three, four, five anticipated commercial-style uses.
And you can't value them.
Well, sure, two of them exist already. I would hope we could.
But you, Ben, and you know you can't value them at this point.
If you'd like to divide by the mill rate.
Thank, thank you.
You can walk right back anywhere. It's easy math.
That's what I'm asking for, that easy math, because here we are talking about a big deal, and I'm just looking for easy math. So could somebody walk me through, once again, what do we anticipate the value of each residential tower to be? And what do we estimate the value, because we are talking about a tax incentive?
I will tell you now, I am not going to put a number on the buildings, because as Dan spoke to before, you can take those buildings, and when they go to planning and zoning, if there's changes made, so there's been issues with the height, they could change the height of the building, which could change the number of units, which could change the tax assessment. So to try and make me come up with a number, I'm not going to give you a number, and I don't think we have to give a number now. I think what we have to do is agree that, as a community, what we can do as a community to help incentivize the development is provide them with a number that gives them a fixed number to calculate a cash flow, that can then be used to go out and get financing for the project and have that signed on the dotted line.
I understand that, but in all fairness to the residents, we should be fully aware of what we're looking at. We should understand what the potential values are, and I understand build-outs, and I understand that a lot of that could be personal property to the tenants, so that's an added bonus, and that wouldn't be part of this equation. But I think it would be pretty easier, and I do believe in the past, the assessor came up with a value per unit. Am I, do you remember that memo or no?
I do remember the memo, but I don't believe the value per unit is a valid calculation. Because you have garage space, Susan talked earlier about a pool, you have gym space. So when you calculate something based on a value per residential unit, it's really an erroneous number, because we don't have an approved site plan. We can't sit there and say what the number is. And what's different about this from a previous tax assessment is, or tax abatement application, is that this is a much bigger project with a different type of financing. And so the tax abatement, we'll say in your case, that you received.
I didn't receive.
Well, your partnership was one of the groups that received a tax abatement from the town, am I correct? And you disclosed that earlier this evening.
I'm a member of an LLC that got a pass-through tax abatement.
Absolutely.
Do you know what the change is going to be when all of these lots are combined? Right now, I don't know how many lots there are. Dan, you would know. How many building lots are there, like fourteen?
Fourteen, yeah.
Yeah, and one of them was always anticipated as being left separate because of some of the gas station issues. I don't know if that's what will happen in the end, but that's what originally was talked about. Do we, do we comprehend or have a number of what the assessment of the land values is going to change when the lot lines disappear? We all know when you change lot lines and you're going to...
And that's what's represented by the change from ninety-four thousand dollars a year to a hundred and forty-one.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. And so technically, divide by the mill rate and divide by point seven.
No, no, I was, you already answered me. That was what I was looking for. I wanted to know what the physical change was going to, or what the, you know, anticipated change was going to be. You just, thank you. First, first time I got a perfect answer. Thank you. Okay.
Can I just ask a question and then go back to you?
Please.
Ben, because it's related to that. Dan mentioned something. This question more for Mary and Carrie. Dan mentioned when a building, you mentioned a ten-million-dollar building is not completed, maybe it's completed to a six-million-dollar level, is that then on the grand list and taxed?
Yes.
So we receive the taxes for that six-million-dollar interim?
You get one bill for that one year, and then when it gets the CO, that goes back...
To what? To what?
Comes off and goes back to just the land values if we approve the...
It allows for that construction period.
It allows for, right, the interim assessment based on partial construction.
So we get, the town is made those interim taxes.
You get some earlier revenue that we didn't model out.
I did not know.
Comes down to this time.
Just gets really complicated.
I got it out at this meeting. I weaned it out.
Good job.
So that's a very difficult...
It's difficult, and that's why a lot of them do opt to go ahead and pay the taxes on the partial construction, and then, and then have the actual fixed assessment kick in when the CO is issued. So as each building again comes online, it would come off, it would come off the tax bill.
That's a lot more.
But I, the other, the other thing I just wanted to point out that I thought was, was important, what Dan was saying earlier, is he agrees that the agreement, the fixed assessment agreement can be what you all make of it. And if you're compelled by what Mary has said here tonight, you know, maybe the idea of coming to those core terms, that would give you some comfort level, that if you didn't meet those benchmarks, you know, the baby goes away. And, you know, maybe...
Assurances to the town?
Assurances, not, I mean, I think, I think everybody here can appreciate, and I bet you, Ben, even more so than myself, that it is very difficult at this point, without an approved site plan, for Dan to sit here and tell you, it's going to be ex-tenant, it's going to be a restaurant, it's going to be a coffee shop, it's going to be a market or a grocery store, whatever, but he can at least commit to what's going to be commercial, maybe what's going to be planned for being retail versus what's going to have the residential use, and give you some comfort levels in that regard.
How would we go about doing something like that?
I, I'll just make a suggestion, Ken, I don't know, but it seems to me that a smaller group of you, perhaps, a subcommittee, meeting with Dan and Mary, and really getting into the weeds on this, as Dan put it, and figuring out what is acceptable to the town as far as what you would be willing to accept for those broad core parameters, and then you come back to the rest of the board and make your recommendations, and let the board act as a whole cohesive whole. I do think it would be very difficult for all of you to do that.
That makes more sense to me, because I find every time we sit down, I learn better, and I think that committee would certainly be able to meet up with those types of parameters that would be...
If we're talking broad, broad core parameters, I would, I have a pretty good comfort level on commercial and industrial tax incentives. I am reluctant on residential tax incentives as a whole, whether it's a residential use in a business zone or residential use in a residential zone. I believe we're, we all bring something to this community, and part of it is our checkbook, and we have to pay our taxes on a residential end. I, having said that, I do like the idea of negotiating a tax abatement on the commercial end, and I would be fine on being part of that subcommittee, that would be wonderful. But I would, I would say we should have a quick discussion on this board, whether, where they stand on residential, if they have a comfort level with that also.
I also want to point out that within the policy, mixed-use development is something that is to be incentivized. That is one of the items that we have, and I'm very interested in incentivizing a mixed-use development.
Yeah, but the residential piece is actually definitionally involved in mixed use.
Otherwise, you can't have a mixed-use development.
Right.
Well, I would argue, I would argue, you can incentivize the mixed-use development by, for example, doing a seven-year no-tax on the commercial, instead, instead of like a three and a half on the commercial. So...
And I would hope, Ben, that the committee could, could work on that, and I would...
If, if I may.
And Michael had something to say.
I'll wait until Doc goes in.
I respectfully request that tonight's action, if goes to committee, comes with an endorsement on the core economics that would get us back to where we thought we were in February two thousand and fifteen, which is a seven-year deferral of assessment increase for the entire project. And I don't want to waste a committee's time by not being upfront with that as a requirement for us to fulfill the proposal that we have put in front of you.
There will be, from what our conversation has been tonight, there will be some strict controls, if you would. We talked about a thirty-million-dollar investment, we talked about certain timeline. There are more than just that core concept.
No, I agree.
Certainly, our policy is there, and, and again, I will say the obvious. I mean, this is something that I'm committed to working on, as I have been all along, and I want this process to continue. I think it's important for the, for the town.
But to my request is that the, any assignment of authority to the committee should be the ways in which we compel performance based on those core economic terms. We put out the thirty million bucks in the five-year period, or we don't get the seven-year abatement. If we can all agree on that, and I think that it's a very fair motion to put before the Slackman today, then we could have the committee work with us and come up with the rest. I think that's a very reasonable next step to get those other parameters, because there's an historic component. I mean, there are all these things that we've worked with, the entire community, that we want to make sure all the stakeholders are represented in that, and I think that's...
Well, I think a lot of the parameters that Mary pointed out earlier and that our attorney pointed out earlier are things that, that we need to hone, and we're, I'm feeling comfortable with this, more so than I was earlier, and I'll open it up to others. Ryan, you want to tell it?
Well, I think you know where I stand on that, but I would caution the board, I don't know that you want to, if we're talking about a negotiation, I don't really know that you want to suggest what all of your positions are public at the moment, it just makes absolutely no sense. So I would not have that sort of conversation this evening.
Speaking, spoken as a very good legal mind, I would agree with you.
Okay, well, I'll hold my tongue for a moment.
Michael?
Again, just a few things. I mean, I've heard everyone, and I know there's a lot of passion about this, right? There's a lot of strong feelings about that, and I really, I see all the points tonight, that I've heard, I see the concerns, I hear everything that's going on. But I think, I think we need to take a step back for a second, and as a board, look at this as what's going to do for the town in ten years, right? The same way they talk to their kids, right? What, how are they going to be in ten years from now? The conversation hasn't been out, going to make it better in five years, ten years. And I look at the things going on in town here, this project, the other project, our girlfriend. There's a lot of things happening in Portland. I, we're kind of a sleepy little town waking up and big things are happening. So this is a really important time. So the decisions we do, the things that we do are even more important right now. And I think as a board, we need to look at this and, and take some leadership. I've talked to, I'm sure we all have, I've talked to so many people over the last couple of months about this, in terms of those in favor, I've had discussions with Alwyn and a number of other people in town. There, there seems to be a peaking of support for this type of project. People want to do something with that land. They, they want to partner in a way that, they want to grow it together, they want to feel like they're involved in it, and I think people do. And I think as a town and as a board, we need to use all the tools at our disposal to make that happen. I don't view it as a giveaway or something that we're giving to a business that isn't a fair and valuable tool. I would not want to be a developer and do what you do in terms of things, I really wouldn't, because of all the, all the nuances. I understand there's, there's a financial incentive, and you want to make money, I get that, but, but we as a town need to do the best we can, make this the best town for people to come to. We're competing with the Glass Divers and the Colchester's and the other towns out there. And if we don't do this, even in this economic time, or at least pursue these tools to get things developed, we're going to fall behind these other ones. And as, as you had said, also, it's a competitive world with the free market, right? And we need to, as a town, do its best for the town. So that's what I'm trying to look at. I like the project, I'm always open to things that can make it better, but there is, as you said, a collective town appetite, I believe, for this. I believe, you've seen the same thing as well, and the more I talk, the more that, that appetite is apparent to me. I understand there's concerns, but most of the concerns I've heard are, are, are easy to, are, are, we can deal with them, right? They're not unstoppable obstacles, we can get over those. And I think we should, and we should address them one at a time, but I just think we owe it to the, to the town five or two years from now to... town five or two years from now to make the right things now, and whatever tools get us there in the best way possible collectively, we need to do that. But I, I would like to see something built there, I'd like to see the best possible project there, and with all the other things going into town, it could really be something amazing for this town. So, I just, I just, we should address this, but we need to use whatever tools we can to make it happen, that is important. I think we should all play the backgammon, what's going to be best for the town. I know Fred had wanted to say something before, too, if you wanted to leave.
Yeah, when you're, when you're.
Ryan raised his hand.
Oh, yeah, I'm done.
And then.
Mary, if you would, since you brought it up, I'm going to ask you to speculate. Talk about section eight housing. If a developer comes into this property and develops section eight housing, what does it look like? What, what, what type of square footage are we talking about?
I think Mary is probably better versed at the specific statute of being twenty-four G.
Does that, asking really from an experience standpoint, from anybody?
I mean, what they're going to, what they're going to look at, they're probably going to come in with an application for four hundred. There's also extra parcels here, there's parcels that are behind Burger King and Omarborough Street as well, that are available. The reason I, I say that, and the reason I say, you know, I was very surprised that people said it's a threat from the developer, and as I look back, you know, to people that aren't in the business, it does sound like a threat. But if you're in the business, these are conversations, we have a monthly economic developers' meeting, and it's the economic development people from around Middlesex County. And what happens with projects where places continually get denied, is eight-thirty G has a root, that if you get denied, you appeal it and it goes to court. And when it goes to court, it gets approved, and there's tax incentives and tax credits. So for a project like this, that's very difficult to finance, it becomes much easier to utilize your property by putting in an eight-thirty G application. And then those tax credits and things come forward and help you finance.
So it's a comparable.
Can I just make clear on one thing? Eight-thirty G is not subsidized section eight housing.
No, it's, it's affordable.
Eight-thirty G is workforce housing.
It's affordable housing.
Affordable.
I thought you brought up section eight.
It's, and I will tell you.
No, I just, I thought that it was.
And in reality, I don't really care what you're talking about, my, my voice is different. You're talking about a comparable or a larger project.
It would, I would expect, I would expect the application, Brian, to be larger, because the focus wouldn't be on, I think the focus with this project, although there's more housing because of the VCI report and the Smart Growth Report that the Cog put out, the focus is really on mixed use. It's on making sure that those commercial elements are there, and kind of filling the needs in the community. The, the other would not have that focus on the commercial, so you would see more space filled with residential units.
And Carrie, are the subsidies equivalent to a seven-year tax abatement?
You mean that they were to do eight-thirty G?
Yeah.
It really would depend, I mean, it would depend on what they were proposing. I mean, there's a number of different statutes that apply. There's incentive housing statutes. State has to have money, though.
Sure.
To give them those incentives, and I think it's going to be very unlikely that there's money there for that. I think my bigger concern about the eight-thirty G, from everything I've heard here, is there's not going to be a requirement for a commercial component. They don't have to put any.
I guess my point is different. So the, the, whatever everyone takes issue with the word, but whatever sort of subsidy the state gives, whatever developer comes in to do this property, doesn't sound like it's a law.
It's not.
Right. And, and, and that's a viable project for them to do, and they can build it, it's very similar to me, it seems like, and they're going to make money off it, right?
Well, what they'll do is they'll put even more units, because they won't be required to comply with your zoning regulation. So they'll put even more units, and then they have to dedicate a third of those units to workforce, to be, to be need-restricted, to be sold at a percentage of median income. That's what I call a workforce.
My, my point really is, is that so they're able to build this property and make an income, and it sounds like, according to you, Dan, you're not, but that's what you're telling us, right? Without a seven-year tax.
Well, they don't have to worry about the historical housing. They don't have to.
Well, that's, to me, that's really your problem. You bought the property with the house.
They don't have to put it in the entrance way. So, if we didn't have to do that, then it would be a different game.
Can I ask you another question?
To Carrie?
No, just in general, a different issue. It seems to me, you're talking about collectively what you think people in the town want. I must travel in different circles, because the vast majority of people that I speak to are not interested in this project whatsoever. And I'm wondering, with the election coming up, I don't know if it's possible to do an informal poll with the election, in terms of what people actually, whether they have any interest in this or not.
You're not going to be able to put it on a ballot. If you want to stand, if, if someone wanted to stand outside a voting booth, you can ask any question you want.
Not it.
You're not allowed to put anything, I'm sorry?
Not it, I'm not standing at the door.
I know.
I don't care what it is, I'm just asking if there's an informal way to get a sense of what the towns really would want as a building to this project. Because.
Well, you know what?
Should, there's people in this room.
That's a good question that I think can be answered as we proceed, but I'm, I'm going to let our selectmen now speak now.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Just, yeah, just a couple of things. One, I, and it was, that point was brought up about the board itself having to decide what, what and how it's going to deal with the fixed assessment. You brought that up earlier, since it was in the know at the beginning, and there, and I, as I recall, there was discussion about it. We all had a different viewpoint, I think. But we really have to have some kind of understanding ourselves. I mean, there's no point, if there are four or five people who, and I had a couple of questions for Dan, but if there are four or five people who feel strongly about not including the housing as a part of the discussion for incentives, then we kind of, we have to know from Dan, just where, where he stands, too. I, I, you know, I understand that we can't negotiate in public, and however, if there's negotiation process, usually there's sit-down, there's discussion, there's a variety of items that are on the table, and there's some give and take. And so, I think what's important, that we know where we are as a board, but we also need to know where you are, because there's no point in everybody wasting their time.
That's why.
You're coming in with.
Right, that's why I was trying to jump in.
You want a full boat assessment on housing, let's say, and, and a full boat assessment on commercial and retail. If that's your position, you know, then there's not going to be any negotiation, because, you know, you stated what you wanted, and we're, you know, we're at a point where there is no negotiation. So what I, I guess my question to you is, is, and there are a lot of moving targets in this. We're not, you know, we don't have a formal application, and I, you know, in front of us, and we have the concept, and a lot of details have to be kind of put down and worked out and worked through if we're going to go forward, Susan, that put some of those down. So I guess what I'm asking you is, how do you view this process if we decide that we're going to have a couple of the selectmen involved with the first selectman, or if it's the first selectman and we get advised by the selectman? We have to decide that. But, but where are you in all this? How do you see this negotiation if this were to occur?
I think I can give you a shorter answer than I normally do, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The path I see is that tonight, we go to a vote on the core parameters that we're asking for, which is, we make the thirty million dollar investment in a five-year period, you defer the assessment increase for seven years. Put that to a vote. If it fails, we're done, it's fine, we move on. If it passes, I would say the people who voted for it, who would then not act as obstructionist potentially within the negotiation, because then it's only alive if the plurality voted for it, would be assigned to a committee to work out the remaining details. And I assure you, we could do that in good faith together. But this process started in February two thousand and fifteen with an assumption on our side on the application as submitted of the seven-year abatement, having been part of everything that came since then. So when we first came in, there was a ton of negotiation, and it was with a variety of boards. But it started with, we had the tax abatement approved, and we created a site plan that revolved around the Brainerd House restoration and moving the entrance to accommodate that. Our first thing that we went to market with to test the commercial leasing scenario, didn't have the Sage House on it. That's something we worked back and forth with Dan on. We got through the zoning process before putting on the table the Hart Jarvis House, and that was because, through a lot of discussions with many people here, where we're trying to balance all the inputs, we said, okay, we'll try to make the A building a little bigger, in the way that we referenced that more speculative office component of the top of that, of that building, and carve out a section of our site for the Hart Jarvis House. Earlier iterations of that had the Hart Jarvis out on the town-owned parcel next to the gas station along the main. So we've used a lot of time, and maybe we just were talking past each other the whole time, but we were constantly trying to figure out, both by getting feedback from the marketplace and checking assumptions on prospective rent levels and all the other things that inform these economic models, what can we do? And so we have put on the table what we can do. And it's only enabled by the seven-year thing, because what will happen is, if we say, oh, let's start negotiating these other parameters, then everybody in the audience starts losing their minds, because all of a sudden Hart Jarvis can't be afforded to move to that part of the site. We don't want the Sage House. If anybody's been inside the Sage House, it's so cut up and ridiculous. We're starting over with some of these buildings, and it'll cost a lot of money to do that. But we're willing to do it. We're willing to do everything we've said we'll do. But we have to have an economic model that works, and we have to be able to start on it now, because there's, you know, we're talking about the Fed. There's real, it's, things are going to change, the models are changing. And so we're not going in the direction of making this happen without an affirmative vote by the selectmen tonight for a seven-year abatement. And in our part of it, is a thirty million dollar investment and following through on the core things that we've all been talking about, that wouldn't be that hard to put pen to paper on, and I think should be done at a committee level. But we can't negotiate on the economic terms, because we've already stretched each step of the way, and we're speculating, and we're facing higher interest rates coming. And that's just the biggest single risk on all this. It's why we're saying we're in or we're out, because frankly, the storm clouds are above us.
On the H building, you keep saying you're going to, I believe, give it to the town of Portland, or that's what you're.
This is Hart Jarvis, no?
Yeah, you labeled it H, probably.
No, 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 the, the letter, the letters are per building, right?
Yeah.
And then they're further clarified, if you read to the right of the H.
Yeah, that's the Hart Jarvis, right?
Mm-hmm.
The one you're going to put in the corner of the property towards, and right next to the town green?
Yeah.
Right.
I just don't want to get hung up on a letter designation as an issue. Yes, to the right of the H, it says Hart Jarvis House.
Uh, not on.
Up there.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. So we're talking about the same house here. Are you anticipating putting land with that to connect, or are we going to own a building on your land, if this was to go through? What do you, how do you see that work?
I see that as exactly what we should be talking about. So the Hart Jarvis House, we would relocate onto the parcel, on our parcel, and it would be carved out like you would a condominium. So the structure itself would be owned by the town. There are other pieces to this. If we could get into the phase of working together, you now have a twenty-two thousand, twenty-two hundred square foot building, and the associated parking allocation generally for that is four, four spots per thousand, so you have about eight to ten spots that would get identified on our site. There's no reason we can't work together and start working on maintenance of the spots and things like that that integrate an actual plan.
Yeah.
But what we're not, Ben, let me finish.
Yeah, please.
What we haven't gotten to, because we got hung up on these fundamentals, we haven't gotten to actually solving the rest of the puzzle. We've got it into this block form, but until the town has a use, you can't get the details right on the Hart Jarvis House. That's a point of exposure we have, saying, well, we're going to work with everybody to facilitate X, Y, and Z. We say we'll move it, I bet the uses will want to get up to the top floor, and if it's a town building, I bet there's an elevator that's needed, and I bet there's all kinds of stuff that'll have to go into the foundation. So there are pieces of this that we would work out if we could just partner. If we can't partner, if there's not the appetite to partner, life's too short, life's too short because of prevailing.
Just so we're clear, because obviously there are a lot of components, and so far I've been, I've been fully comprehending everything you've been saying. When you, so you're planning on paying to move this house as part of your plan and part of the agreement, you would be paying to move the Hart Jarvis House to the corner of the property and turn it into, your thought is a condominium that the town of Portland would then own?
No, the condominium is just a form of ownership designation. You can have commercial, you can have residential.
Right, right. No, no, I mean, kind of, correct, condo unit.
Yes.
Okay, not talking the use, could be a business condo unit.
Fine, yep.
So into a condo unit, and I would assume there would be a set amount of land around it that would be anticipated for parking and for maintenance and for uses? I think it brings up the question that then the town attorney would have to ask. If that's what we're talking about here in a tax agreement, I believe anytime you bring on a burden to the residents of the town of Portland, what is the dollar amount, Susan, ten thousand, I think? It has to then go to vote.
Bring on a tax burden?
Well, if we're bringing on a liability, we're bringing on where we know we're spending a ton of money, of the taxpayers' money, it's going to happen, if that's, if that's the plan, right?
Are you talking about just in renovating the Hart Jarvis House, taking on the renovation of the Hart Jarvis?
Or, or even, or even, forget the renovation, even the liability of maintaining it.
Right.
To a minimum standard, we're taking on a dollar amount per year, that the residents would be then be responsible for.
And Ben, candidly, if I may, if the voice of the selectmen is, let's find every problem we can put up, and every additional hurdle, if that's the attitude, because there's no necessary, we could, we could create a big billboard there, we can put together a nice-looking building that you never have to spend money on, and we can maintain the outside of it for you.
If you think.
The point, wait, Ben, let me finish.
Okay, please.
The point is, we're either working together, or we're not.
In other words, you don't have to do it.
Right, and if, if you were implying that I'm putting up a hurdle by asking intelligent questions that are talking about burdens to the resident.
That's a self-identified label, but the point here is.
No, 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 hang on. If, if, if there's going to be a burden to the residents of Portland in any way, shape, or form, I think the majority of this room would agree that's an intelligent question. So that's not, the fact that you would even say that.
No, no, it's taken not as a burden, it's taken as something that's been requested by many people.
But until we come up with a, until we come up with a dollar amount for the renovation and in a successful use at the end, which could happen.
There is a process for.
Right. In, in the interim, we would be taking on a liability, and we should know all of these questions.
And you can say that you want to know exactly how many cobblestones are on the sidewalk. And we can get into the level of minutia that stops this from being an incentive for us to invest.
No, I was getting into the basics about the parking that we require.
No, 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 we're finally getting to something that frankly, I alluded to in my initial presentation, which was that it would be great to get back to where we were in two thousand and fifteen, and to answer these questions and working together.
And I'm going to point out that actually, selectmen now has the floor.
Yeah, excuse me.
Brett?
Yes, yes. I'll go back to that. I'm going back, just looking at the, at the resolution that you have drafted, Susan. It was, Gail, it was from Gail. And my, I guess my question is, is there another, I'm just looking through, is this what you were referring to for discussion, if someone were to make a motion for a resolution? Do we have something?
The only other draft you have is this blue draft, but it's, it's really very, very much like the one that was passed in February of two thousand and sixteen. I don't know that you're ready for this, but I put it in the packet. The letter that you're holding, can I see it? Because they're both.
This is the one that Gail sent on the twenty-first, saying that, you know.
Today, she wrote it today.
Yeah, reaffirming selectmen.
Do you want to refresh us what it says, Brett?
Saying the selectmen have the authority. I'm, I'm just confused a little bit, I guess, on what, on, on this two-step process, if, if in fact, the selectmen were to okay it.
On this two-step process, if in fact the selectmen were to okay it, and then there'd be a second part. It sounds like there'd be a second part because there are so many details that are fuzzy.
In terms of an agreement, I think the better person to ask those questions, Fred, would be our attorney.
Okay.
And you can certainly direct them to Carrie.
Switch over to the attorney. Yeah. Okay, I'm sitting down. Here's a resolution in front of us. Now, as you interpret tonight's discussion, what would that... What would the key element of that resolution be?
Well, I think there's two parts here. Dan is asking you to pass at least an initial resolution saying that you will commit to a seven-year tax fixing agreement in return for his commitment to invest $30 million within five years in his property. He's asking you for that. What I had suggested earlier was that you take this under advisement under a subcommittee and come up with the core parameters that you would want them to commit to in order to pass that resolution. Again, how many square feet of... You know, you can't get into the minutia. You start getting into the bricks, and it's not going to work. But you could at least discuss some parameters that you feel are important. Make sure that, you know, the restoration of the historic building is included. Make sure there's going to be X amount of commercial or... You know, whatever is important to you and the subcommittee, and then that comes back to the board as a whole to vote on.
I would be willing to consider a time limit on that as well, which I think is critical. I don't want this to linger. This is not an intention for lingering. This is an intention to get something done. And I would add to, and I don't know that the selectmen or that Dan would be ready for this, but I would also like to see in terms of achievements, very important to me are jobs creation. And the other thing that's very important to me is the consideration of either local or regional contractors that would be considered for working on the project. I mean, the whole reason for economic development is not just for taxes. The whole reason for economic development is to provide jobs and to provide services and to provide a better way of life for our community. So how those parameters are going to be measured is critical to me. And I wanted to make that statement as well. And I think that we're there because without economic development, as Mary and I and Economic Development Commission discuss all the time, it's not just how much taxes are coming into the town of Portland's coffers, but rather how our way of life is improved and how people have better ways of life. And that includes jobs, and that most certainly includes services. So for me, it's very important as to what the components of the commercial as well as the components of the residential. And I mentioned that, and I'm not going to get into the weeds, but economic development, remember, for the third time or fourth time I'll say it, is not only the taxes, but the way of life and the services and the income that will be generated in the state of Connecticut, not just the town of Portland, for good jobs. And I want to see services, and I want to see commercial development that creates good jobs, not minimum wage or below minimum wage jobs, but good jobs that really improve the way of life in the state. And if every town did that in terms of their economic development, we might not be where we are. Because if you have good jobs and people have good, safe places to live, then they're also paying taxes to the state of Connecticut, and they're also buying things at the local drugstore or at Malili's or at Trittown or buying those houses that you and I see every day that are going up for sale in our town. We just need good, quality economic development. And how we get that done in these core parameters, I'm committed to working with you on that. And if it's a tool that you need, and it's proven to this board, as I think we're very close, as Mary very, I think, eloquently pointed out, and Economic Development Commission as well, we will get a solid agreement going forward. We need the tools, but we also need the products. So back to Fred.
Okay. So I... Yeah, I think I have somewhat of a clearer picture. And so the applicant, the applicant right now is asking, really not for... He's not asking for anything really specific. He's asking for seven years. Then Fred asks, is that seven years at 50%? Seven years, 100%? What's he asking?
He's asking for seven years, 100% as of the date of the CEO. Each building as they come online.
So nothing else would be okay?
And in return, he's offering a $30 million commitment within five years.
And I'm pointing out other parameters that I think are important for measurement.
That are other... That are other performance criteria that don't undermine the economic model. So that's why I'm just throwing out a vote for tonight about affirming the economic model so that it's not an empty exercise to assign a committee to go work on things that take dollars away.
Yeah, this is definitely... I would confirm, this is definitely not an empty exercise.
No, 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 no. But I mean... What I'm trying to... And one of the reasons we requested Carrie's presence tonight was to facilitate this discussion because of the fact that this is not a usual process for the town. And we respect that.
And I can tell you that when I, as first selectman, invite the town attorney to come, I certainly listen to her advice. One thing is, we're paying for it.
True.
And I would like to explore what you said with timelines. And I think that is... I'm seeing some consensus here for proceeding. If you could assist us with that, I think that would be very helpful. With a very direct assertion that the town is very interested in this process.
So... So may I ask, does that mean... I can ask, and you can then say, no. Does that mean that there won't be action taken on the basic request that I have, which is to poll the selectmen to see whether or not those basic parameters as outlined by Carrie a moment ago?
Well, I can tell you, I'm very committed to the incentive policy that we have, which does include for more than $3 million...
Yeah, the $3 million qualifying investment for the seven years, and we're at 10 times.
And that it is a tool that we use and all of these other factors. You know, it's 10:30 tonight. I don't know that we can get all of those on par.
But we're not... No, I'm not asking for that, Susan. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for the basic core economics as those three parameters, and then we have to put the rest of it together, and that's fine.
Yeah, my problem with that, again, just as town attorney, and I don't mean to speak out of turn, you're asking them for them to vote on something that has two or three specific parameters that they'd be committing to without the caveat that it would also be subject to these other things that are very important.
We're already cautious beyond words what the vote means.
I know, but what you're...
Okay, on the back, we've already proven beyond a shadow of a doubt that the vote doesn't mean much because it got rescinded, okay? Last time around, all right? So we have to get, before another dollar goes into this job, we have to get the actual executed agreement. We're all aligned here.
And I think we're making the statement that you don't need to put another dollar on the table or in the investment. And I'm committed to having a very tight timeline
What we do define as a tight timeline?
in terms of the advice from Carrie Olson. Well, I would like Carrie to take the microphone so that we could hear in a little more detail what you're saying, and I think this board can commit to a timeline.